Changes in the minutes as presented in your board and form of packet. And we'll still move for approval. Motion by Mr. Crave. Seconded by Ms. Stangler to approve the meeting minutes from Monday, November fourteenth as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh vote. Takes us to the minutes of the special board meeting, Monday, November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Second. Got a motion by Ms. Stangler, seconded by Mr. Sets to approve the meeting minutes for the special board meeting, Monday, November twenty eighth. As presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh vote. Takes us to the minutes from the special board meeting, Monday, November twenty eighth session.
How many to approve?
Got a motion by Ms. Kwame.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sets to approve the minutes from the special board meeting on Monday, November twenty eighth. As presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh vote. This brings us to a presentation to the board. We have Ms. Monica Hauser with Hawkins and Ash CBA to present on the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two audit report. Monica, you have the floor.
Alright, okay, is it sound okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Perfect. Can't get my headset off, so I gotta use my computer speaker. Okay, so I'm Monica Hauser. I'm the partner in charge of your audit. So, I've been working with the district for quite a few years now. I'll just do a very brief summary of kind of what we, what happened for the audit and then what we found. I won't go into a lot of numbers unless anybody has specific questions and wants me to cover that detail, but I'm assuming you don't want to be here all night, so I'll try to make it brief. Okay, there's two parts to your audit. So, we do a financial piece and then we do a compliance piece. So, this year, every district I worked with had enough federal awards that we had to do a single audit. So, that means we had to test compliance on some of your federal programs. So, that's new this year. It's all dependent on how much federal money you spend. And if you get over seven hundred and fifty thousand or actually if you get seven hundred and fifty thousand or more, then you have to have that single audit done each year. So, I'm guessing we're gonna be in that situation probably maybe just a couple of years. Then once all this COVID money, the ESSER funds is all spent, then we'll drop down below that single audit threshold again. So, and we also have to test some of the state programs for compliance as well. And those are required by the state. So, that's kind of the background. If you have the books in front of you, I don't know if we do or not.
Yeah, they do, Monica.
Okay, perfect. So, I'm gonna start with the thicker book, the financial statements. And on page three is our independent auditor's report. This is, in my opinion, the most important part of the finance, or the report here. And this is, this is what you're hiring us to do, is to put our opinion on the financials. So, things look a little bit different this year. Some may notice, some may not. We now start our independent auditor's report with the old canyon. The reason we had to change was because we had some new auditing standards that were required to be implemented for this year. So, all, it didn't really, it didn't change what we do, it just changed some of the way that these reports look. And when we get into the management letter, you will see it again, and I'll bring it up and tell you why some of the wording is different there. So, we start out on page three, our opinion. So, we're issuing an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, meaning that the numbers are fairly presented. That's what you need for DPI, so the numbers are correct as reported. Okay, then I'm gonna skip to page six. This is the management discussion analysis. So, this is prepared by management. It's a very good overview of what happened from fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two. I'm not gonna read this to you, but if you're interested, this provides a good summary of the changes. So, we're gonna jump into the fund financials, which is how you report to DPI on page fourteen. We tend to focus on the general fund. Typically, our other funds are all some reserves and fund balances are all set aside for specific purposes. So, therefore, we focus on the general fund. So, you can see on page fourteen, this is the balance sheet of your general fund and then all of the non-major governmental funds. These are all of your other funds, your food service, community service program, capital projects, all of those are lumped together and shown in one column here. You want more detail, on, in the back of the financials on page forty-five is where we break out those individual funds. So, the general fund, and when we report general fund here, it's Fund Ten or the general fund as you know it, along with the special ed or Fund Twenty-Seven. And that's a GAFD or Governmental Accounting Standards Board requirement that we lump those two funds together. So, just mention the fund balance. The unassigned fund balance for the general fund at the end of six thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, three million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six twenty-one. So, there's no magical number. We did increase our fund balance a fair amount this year. So, I, you've heard me talk in the past, I always say that a good fund balance is not having to go out to short-term borrow, do payroll and all that, that you're able to get between when those people's aidings or your state aids aren't in yet, you're able to function without having to go to the bank to get cash flow needs. This year's percentage, we take the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of our current year expenditures. This year, that number is thirty-four point five percent. Last year was twenty-eight point six percent. So, we had a good increase there. We flip to the next page, on page fifteen. This is our income statement or the statement of revenues and expenses and changes and fund balance. And you can see at the bottom of the page on the general fund column, we added seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand to fund balance this year. So, and it's okay, you know, to add that, sometimes we end up using that in the next year for a specific project or if we're not, if we're not getting as many federal and state funds, it's nice to be able to dip into that fund balance if needed. Okay, so then I'm gonna skip to, into the footnote on page twenty-five. And I'll just point out, this is the detail on your long-term debt. So, we have thirteen million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand outstanding in long-term debt. So, you can see the two fund issuances there. And then you can see the maturity schedule broken out between principal and interest there. Okay, and then I'm gonna skip to page thirty-five. Just wanna point out, this is more detail on specific fund balance, reserves or if they're, some of them are restricted. And so, this is all broken down on page thirty-five, so you can see that detail there. Okay, then I'm gonna go, just wanna point out on page forty-six, this is those non-major governmental funds that all roll up into that one column in the statement we were just looking at. And so, you can see there your debt service fund, your capital project fund, your trust fund, that's Fund Twenty-One. We accumulate like gifts, any like, the old Fund Sixty or activity funds are in here. And the old scholarship funds or Fund Seventy-two are now recorded in this trust fund column. Then we have community service and food service. So, you can see we had pretty good addition to our food service fund balance this year. And that was pretty common across the districts I, districts I work with. Just simply because of the COVID funding that we got from USDA, I'm guessing that's gonna change significantly for most of these districts this, in fiscal year twenty-three. Because the reimbursement rates are gonna go back to the pre-COVID amount. Okay, page forty-seven, this is our schedule of federal awards. So, it just shows all of your grants that you get broken down. And then our total federal awards were one million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two. So, since it's over seven hundred and fifty thousand, that part makes us do that single audit. Okay, the last thing in here is on page fifty-four. This is our schedule of findings and question costs. So, kind of the overall summary of the audit here. It shows that we had a material weakness identified this year, and I'm gonna talk about that in just a second as we go down the page. The federal funds that we tested in the middle of the page. We tested the ESSER or ESSF fund and then that child nutrition or food service fund cluster we were required, required to test. Okay, as far as the findings, so on page fifty-five, first one is preparation of financial statements. And this is a pretty common finding in many of the entities I work with, simply because they don't, the district or municipality or whatever kind of entity I'm working with doesn't have the resources to hire somebody else to do the financials. In this case, we did a lot of adjustments this year, so we determined that we did not think those financials could be prepared internally. People, it's okay to still hire us to do it, a lot of people do that. But we need to make sure that management has qualifications and skills, knowledge and expertise to be able to catch it if there was a material error in there. And then the second finding was material audit adjustments, that's on page fifty-six. Again, this is new this year. Just based on the size and the number of entries we had to do, we determined that we needed to report a finding, hoping that this is gonna get fixed in fiscal year twenty-three. I'll point out the entries that we did when I get into the other report in just a couple minutes. And then on the very last page there, the correct, I think it's in your bound book, corrective action plan by the, from the district. That's required by DPI. Obviously, when we have findings, DPI wants to make sure that we're doing everything, we have a plan in place to get those things corrected. Okay, so, second report I have here is the independent auditor's report on communication with those charged with government. This is required communication to the board. It would identify if there was any major problems during the audit. Included in here are the adjusting journal entries, if we have significant estimates, that's all in here. So, I will just point out on page three, this is another place where, this is new. Almost every presentation I've done this year, I've got a question on it, so I just wanna bring it to your attention in case somebody did have a question on it. These are, the significant risks identified comes from the new auditing standards as well. So, these risks were always there. We always did audit procedures to address these risks. It's, these standards basically just wanted to get it out in front of management, making sure that you understand that in every entity has, excuse me, every entity has these risks. So, in every audit I've done, we have management override of controls. That's just a risk that's out there, that management is going to tell somebody that at a, you know, lower authority to do something that's not correct. So, yes, we have things in place to prevent this. Hopefully, our internal controls would prevent that, but that risk does appear in every audit. Same thing for improper revenue recognition, that's a risk for every audit. With our school district, the risk is very low, simply because most of our money comes through Wisconsin DPI. And they give us a schedule that we have to tie all of our state aids to. So, a lot of that is taken care of through those audit procedures. So, that's that paragraph. In the middle of the page, we did not implement any new accounting standards this year. We go to page four. Talked about those adjusting journal entries. So, bottom of the page, uncorrected and corrected misstatements. So, corrected misstatements are the audit journal entries. There was fourteen of them this year. They've all been corrected. Those are, those are listed in Appendix, Appendix A. And then the other ones are uncorrected misstatements. This is new for the district as well. So, we had a new lead standard that was supposedly implemented this year. And we chose not to implement it, simply because it's a lot of work and it boils down to it for what we have is our copiers. And so, the amounts are small enough that we did not have to record it on the financial statements to issue an opinion. But it's a little bit bigger than our threshold, so we have to at least report it to you. But what I would have done is put an asset and a liability on the book, and then we would have had to amortize it. So, it's a lot of extra accounting that we kind of determined that we didn't want to have the district have to pay for it, because they would have to pay us to implement this and change all the reporting. So, we said, look, we can put this uncorrected misstatement in there so that you can see it. Here's our dollar amount, but we're not gonna put it in the actual financial statement. And that amount and the schedule is listed in Appendix B. And like I said, it's for the copier, because your postage machine lease ran out. Oh, I think in May, so if there's a new lease, then we'll have to figure that out next year and see if we get over that threshold and end up having to report this, but I know that's a lot of information in a short period of time. I don't know if there's any questions out there, or if anybody wants me to cover something in more detail.
Board members, any questions for Monica?
I'm satisfied.
Sarah? So, it appears, Monica, that your presentation was thorough enough. There's no outstanding questions for you this evening?
Sounds good. If anybody takes them home and reads it and comes up with a question, please feel free to reach out. I can't get to answer any of those questions.
Okay. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me do this virtually.
Alright, moving forward, that'll take us to board reports. I do not believe we have either one of our student representatives available this evening. So, we'll move into the approval of bills and vouchers. We have the treasurer's reports and the superintendent listing of disbursements through November thirtieth. Are there any questions that have not been answered prior to this meeting in regards to the treasurer's report for listing of disbursements or others?
I had some, they recorded two thousand and twenty-one. Swimming lessons or something, two thousand and twenty-one. Some write daughter-in-law's name and a whole host of others.
We received money from the township, so we're refunding what they gave. So, for a town of Portland and Howard Waterloo, they gave money back for those. For the students that were in those municipalities, they gave a refund back, so we're just refunding that money back to the families.
Exactly. Alright. Any other questions? I'll move to approve the bills and vouchers. In, can you imagine that to include the treasurer's report? Got a little one, yes, okay. So, I've got a motion by Mr. Sets, seconded by Ms. Stangler to approve both the treasurer's report and the listing disbursements through November third. That will be a bold call vote.
Randy, yes.
Kwame, yes.
Schneider, yes?
Yes.
Sets, yes.
Kwame, yes.
Motion carries on a six oh vote. Legislative updates. Doubt we have much changed since our last update? Here to add?
Yeah, I would just say that I think, you know, not that it's any big surprise, but everybody was watching who would get assigned to the joint finance committee, which will be working on the upcoming budget biennium. Because we had quite a bit of changeover in that committee and so that was interesting. You may wanna look at that. And then, as we've been talking about, you know, the, the budget surplus is six point six billion. That's on top of a one point seven billion rainy day fund. So, I think our conversations with legislators about maybe trying to get a little more help for schools has a pretty good support to be able to do that. So, we just all need to do our part and make sure we contact our legislators.
Okay. Bring us to announcements. Any announcements this evening, Mr. Henny? Any announcements, fine, or?
We're gonna there.
Okay. Public input. Does anyone wish to provide public input this evening? If there are none, we will move forward. Takes us into new business. Action item A, staff positions. Listed in your board packet are three staff positions here for two for instructional aides and a part-time position and one for a custodian, which looks to be a retirement. Any questions in regards to the staff positions as presented?
Yeah, just for clarification, Randy's retirement is effective January second. And so, we'll have a, a cake and a send-off for him on January second. If anybody wants to join us that day, it's a non-student day, so staff will get a chance to thank him and say goodbye. The board members are welcome to join us as well. Uh, right around lunchtime, so somewhere between eleven and one, if you wanna stop in. We'll probably have a little bit of food and a cake.
Any questions in regards to the staff positions as presented?
I'll move to approve the staff position as presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Sets, seconded by Ms. Stangler to approve the three positions as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh vote. Takes us to discussion item B, the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two audit report. We just had the presentation by Ms. Hauser. Are there any questions or discussions in regards to the report audit that was presented?
With my limited, while I've been involved with audits for a variety of organizations over the years and considering all the federal hoopla and the, the state's involvement and even with the two findings that were said, I think we did very well. I'm a firm believer in leading our businesses, not being led by auditors and attorneys and insurance agencies. So, I accept the report as necessary and the findings as correct and move to proceed forward and think we are doing well and proceed forward from here.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Alright. Listed as a discussion, so we'll take no action. And we will move into action item C. The baseball batting cage donation. Varsity baseball program has been working on a new batting cage. It appears that we, they've raised the funds that are needed. There's details in the board packet in regards to, I believe, the installation of said batting cage.
Yeah.
Would you like to elaborate, Mr.?
Keith, that's here, our, our city baseball coach, talked about that as well.
I guess if you'd like to, like, and all the details are in the, um, back of your packet with the quotes that we've seen from the various companies that we put to do this. We've raised the funds given to our baseball account, a generous donation from the class of seventy-three and also with the assistance of the booster club to cover, cover up to an extra four thousand dollars. We do have the funds to cover this at zero cost to the district. So, all I'd like to say for is moving forward for approval for the installation and construction, I guess, of the cage to put into our field house. And I guess I'm kind of here to help answer any questions anyone may have or if there's any information like that you may need some clarification on.
Finally, go ahead.
Uh, will this be up during the baseball season or into the summer months?
It's, it's a fully dropdown cage that's controlled by a winch that's running from the ceiling. So, it sits up there during the ceiling and then when we need to use it, it just lowers down, then we unfold the net, then we raise it up, and it's a full seventy-foot cage. It's twelve feet high, fourteen feet wide. But then what happens when we're done with it, we bring it down, we roll the net on top of it, and it sits up on top of the field house in the upper, in the, yeah. So, it's not something that's, it's something that's set permanent, but it runs like a basketball hoop with a key access on the wall where it can raise and lower.
How long will installation take? Is it gonna take hours if we're not gonna be able to use the gym?
The, the company I am working with said if we, like, the quote we have that I would like to go for is they need an answer relatively soon, like, like by Thursday. So, the installation will happen probably over after the break. It should be ready to go by this upcoming spring season if we could actually get it. I think the time to take to install it is not very long. I think maybe a day at most, maybe two, to get this installed. And then it would be just one day to, no use for everything. That, that, it's only on, it'd be on court three in the field house. So, they could still use a majority of the field house to install this or to, for if they need instructional purposes.
That was one of my questions. I was curious as to the locations. You say court three, does it span the entire width or is it down on one side?
To, but the, you know where the banners are currently hanging in the gym and where the divider wall comes out?
Yep.
This would be located on the other side of that divider wall, almost like close to it. So, and it spans between the running lanes of the track on the, on the gym there. Because that's one of the only spots we could physically put it, because otherwise the basketball hoop would swing in the way of it. And also by putting it here, it's now not obstructing a view of a scoreboard. It's also will not, because it, it sits up at the ceiling, but it does hang down a little bit. But it's not obstructing a view of a scoreboard, but it's also, it's, it'll span the width of the gym, of the field house. It's seventy feet long.
Okay. And when retracted, it doesn't prohibit?
When retracted, it doesn't prohibit anything.
Okay. The, I guess, technical question, I'm assuming someone's verified that the structural members of the roof are able to support this?
Yes, the, um, the quote I received there is a guy, a gentleman that'll be installing it has been installing these things for forty-plus years. And he saw the instructional integrity of our roof and the, uh, the field house supports. And he's been installing them. I, I've actually worked with him in a past school district to install these batting cages as well. And he's very, very knowledgeable of how these things work. And he said, yep, this is where we put it. And he showed me the blueprint layout of where they would actually, how they would hook it up and put it.
What about the flooring? Is this gonna make its toll on the flooring? How is the floor protected?
The floor is protected with, we roll The floor is protected, um, with, we roll up tarps across the floor, and then we also put tarps, mat, mats down where the kids would stand when they would swing, but we do roll a tarp of the length of the cage in there, so if a ball were to come from a gymnasium and we say hit a ground ball, it wouldn't hit the floor, it'd hit this tarp, and we've used that in the past in the, um, old gym when we did batting practice and then the, the cage in there as well.
Sure. Is that the only concern, of the impact of the balls just stopping?
Um, not, not really, um, the, yeah, really, that's the only concern, I mean, these, I mean, you're more likely to get a scuff out of a, maybe a basketball or volleyball, I mean, these balls are working in there, the, um, ball is specifically designed to work inside or work indoors, um, I'm not overly concerned about a ball flying out of it or hitting these things here, I mean, I've worked with these things for quite some time and the odds of something coming out of this cage is very, very slim, um. But then I, but we, we do take all precautions, I, I love the wayward position, that's even away from the bleachers, so nothing would, if something were to happen, the bleachers are kind of protected as well, because they were the cage it's gonna be located.
Expected life, twenty years or more?
This, um, ten to fifteen, um, if we keep good care of it, it could last for a lot longer than that. Um, the cage and netting itself, I mean, the, those are the, the netting itself is usually the first to go with the, the things inside it, but tho, that's, netting lasts a long time, um, the cables and winches, you know, if you keep raising it, lowering it, lowering it, with wear and tear, um, in the future, probably, long time down the road will need to be replaced, but those are, you know, just general wear and tear expenses.
So this is more a question for administration, so we currently have cages in the old gym, some sets of cages or kiddy lanes?
Yeah. Yeah, and I think it's important that everybody is aware, and we've gone over this with Keith, so this is not a surprise to him and, and with our athletic director, but, you know, when we, when we built that gym, obviously, we, we built it to be used, so we're not, I am in favor of this request tonight, so I wanted to be clear about that, but we did have a conversation with softball, baseball, and track about how usage would be in the spring, and, and Dev was more than happy having softball down in the lower gym, baseball was more than happy having baseball in the old high school gym, and then track, of course, in the field house, because you got your pole vault pit in there, you've got your running lanes, um, and space and so forth. So, the idea is never locked into stone, uh, but, but those three areas would have those spaces to, to practice in the spring. Obviously, there's some concerns, you, you have some, some translucent skylighting in that gym up there, you have, you know, plastic bleachers, you have electronics on the wall and those kinds of things, so, you know, from an administrative standpoint, would it be nice if we could keep baseball in the old high school gym, um, for sure, but Keith's right, you know, when you look at installation of something like this, you gotta have a long, open space to install it. It probably isn't the batting cage so much that we're worrying about, because like you said, those are rubber balls and that's why the cage is there, and stuff doesn't escape there, it's the occasional kid that might be standing on deck, waiting to get in there, that decides to make a bad choice with a baseball or something, but, you know, that could, that can happen anywhere. I think we gotta let the kids use it and coaches have to be responsible for kids and kids have to be responsible for the stuff that they've been given and, um, I, I think, you know, it isn't very often that you get something in front of you that the money has all been donated for, and so I, I think it's a good opportunity for the district to just, everybody should be aware of, you know, what, what some of the things that could happen, um, most likely won't, but could happen, you know, with the approval of this request. And Keith's put a lot of work into this too, so I wanna thank him for that.
Any other board member questions?
You just have, you just have one comment on the bottom here that you're gonna be asking the booster club for help to offset the electrical and wiring, and it's not included in your estimate?
The, the estimate, the give, the quote gives us the price for the, um, the cage, the installation, the freight. The extra, the reason I went to the booster club to cover the extra cost would be to get an electrician to run a wire from the, we need, we need an electrician to install the wall, I'll look at the heat, it raises and lowers it, um, which is why I went to the booster club to secure money over top of the cost of what the actual cage was. Um, with the extra funding from the booster club, I would like to use that money to, one, get the electrician to put the wall a little, and then possibly, um, purchase or commission someone to make us a commemorative plaque taking the booster club and the class of seventy-three that donated us this money for the, uh, thing.
And we have to go back and review the blueprints, but, um, I believe that the conduit and channeling for that wiring for the batting cage is already there, so it's just a matter of pulling a wire and putting the switch on the wall.
Right. Oh, are there any other questions or? We will look for a motion here.
Cummings will make a motion to approve the varsity batting cage donation to go ahead and move forward with the installation in the gym.
Quammy will second.
Okay, got a motion by Ms. Cummings. Seconded by Ms. Quammy. Any discussion before we vote? I did, I just have one other question, doesn't pertain to the vote per se, but we touched briefly on scheduling. Is there any, do you think in this, they could get in here during break or something to put this in?
After, um, I get approval of this, I am actually, if this gets approved, I'm emailing the guy I'm in contact with immediately after this to talk about what next steps would be.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to a vote, uh, again, this is for approval of the fully donated, no cost to the school, uh, baseball batting cage installation in the field house. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So I've got a motion carrying on a vote of five oh one with a, and, uh, Mr. Sets abstaining from the vote. So you have your approval and you can email away.
Alright, I would just want to say thank you, um, this has been a long-term project that we've been working with for quite some time, so I must say, you know, again, from our program, from our school, thank you. Um, I gotta get to the basketball game, I'm getting a staff appreciation tonight, it's only one of the current lines up, so.
Alright.
Thanks for your work on it, yeah, thanks for all your work.
And answering all the questions.
No problem.
Alright, that'll bring us up to the action item B, the pole vault pit landing pads. And as I'm sure you read, unfortunately, um, there's not a whole bunch of domains to cover that one. So, based on what I've read and I'm sure what you have read, the current pits we have are twenty-two years old and have reached the end point where you probably can't utilize those for our students and our, for competitions. So, we are looking for a way to replace the pits.
Can we just cancel, hold voting until we can board something? I mean, to me, it doesn't make any sense to spend money on this one, we've had to cut, like, summer school for kids that are really needed, not just for fun. I can't see us spending this much money on something that's not necessary for learning.
Do we have a quote on the, maybe that's about eighty, twenty-two thousand-ish?
That's an estimate, we don't have a hard quote, but yeah, somewhere, give or take, a little bit in that twenty-two thousand range.
And it does say that the booster club is, would technically agree to fund the entire purchase as long as the district pays, or fifty percent of the expense at some point in the near future.
Right. Right, so.
So fifty percent of it is funded.
Yep.
Yep.
But we still have to pay them back, so it's still costing money.
Yes, it would be, um, we do have, I'm sure, events scheduled, et cetera.
Already.
To host competitions, so that would alter that, because then technically would that make us not allowed, you would not be allowed to host meets, et cetera, you can't provide adequate accommodations for all activities?
No, um, you could still host them either, our schools that don't have pole vault pits, um, it, it certainly, you know, sometimes limits your schools that will attend, because they obviously want all of their participants to attend, um, but, yeah, I, the unfortunate part of it is, is, you know, there's always a few kids from each school, it's not a huge numbers event, but probably one of the most expensive events just because of the poles and the pits and landing pads and all of those things that go along with it, um, you know, we've been trying to make those last as much as possible, um, there's just never a good opportunity to replace those kinds of things, especially when there's so many other priorities, uh, and I don't, I don't have a real good recommendation for you tonight either, but at least it gets it on the table for discussion and you guys can talk about philosophically, you know, where you wanna be.
Sure. So can anybody define for me near future? When they say they need to pay in the near future?
I believe they want to find next, the next fiscal year, they're okay with the date, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, I believe.
Okay. Is there a resource to the district, Brian, that could, uh, either certify or decertify said mats? So it's not us, uh, just going on look and feel, is there a way, you know, if you recondition helmets or something, someone can certify?
I'm not aware of any place that will do that, um, but any experience that I have with people that do do that for things, they basically go by purchase dates and life expectancies, and so anytime you're well outside of that, it's usually a decertification, so.
Sure.
I don't think that would go real well for us if we, we did it, but I could be wrong.
Sure. One way or another, it forces us to close here. And it's a third-party conference.
Do you think the track team could go and fundraise like the baseball did? You know, I mean, baseball seems to fundraise seven, eight thousand dollars, I don't know, I'm gonna have donations, but, you know, if they can get eight thousand dollars, that's more, about fifty percent of the, you know, that's, you know.
Yep.
I suggest that to them.
I feel badly about taking this on in light of everything else we've been encountering, and even the near future being twelve to twenty-four months from now, is still a little more imminent than what I'm comfortable with. If I felt there was a complimentary fundraiser effort by the track team to help, um, meet this gap in twelve to twenty-four months, I would be in favor, but I'd like to see some, I don't feel it's responsible for us to take this on with all the challenges we're facing at this time.
So if they came back and said that they would do three fundraisers this year in their track season, you would be fine with saying you would take it on, if that's what they will come back and say? So at least they're showing that they're trying to raise money.
I, I still wouldn't be, until they come back and say, we have raised twenty thousand dollars, whatever you need for it.
Track's gonna come right around the corner, we're already talking, you know, December.
Yeah, so is summer school.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we voted last month to not take on athletic expense, that was one of the things that we decided to cut as a board, so I, I think that this discussion's already been addressed, so why is it unfortunate?
Some question, can you even get pole vault pits that quickly? Would this work?
I think we could still get it if we ordered it in the next few weeks, but much after that, probably. I mean, we could get it, just, like Sarah said, track is right around the corner.
Alright. And again, this is specifically for pole vault, this is not, we have different pits for them.
Well, our high jump pits are fairly old too, so that's, that's the next thing that's coming.
Sure. Any further discussion? So, if we're asked to either take action here and, um, someone could put a motion on the floor, or, um, you know, we don't take action and nothing happens?
I don't know, we do not spend money on pole vault pit pads at this time.
Okay, we've got a motion by Ms. Stangler, as she stated, to not take action, to not proceed with securing any pole vault pits at this time.
I'll second that.
And I've got a second by Mr. Craig. Any discussion before we vote? Again, we're voting to not proceed with any sort of purchase at this time of pole vault pit landing pads.
I think this, the district is not looking to acquire, the booster club must support this totally, that's for sure.
I'm agree with that, but.
Or they, if they come back and say that they can raise money, or the booster raised so much and then they raised so much, and then they come back and ask us again, obviously, like you said, we kind of stopped all expenditures of equipment, unfortunately, they need it to, so we have to figure that out.
Sure, the door's always open for new business, but with what's presented, the cost being covered and then being repaid by the district, fifty percent, this is a motion to not proceed in that direction. So, all those in favor of said motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
So motion carries on a five one vote. Brings us to action item E, the kids' heart challenge. Miss Beacon and the elementary school would like to participate in the kids' heart challenge for this year. It is a spin-off of the jump rope for heart program. And it's been recommended that the board approve the participation in the kids' heart challenge fundraiser for the American Heart Association, in the discussion regarding this challenge.
Is this like a one-day event?
I don't know, is it a month-long fundraiser or like?
Um, I think the fundraiser lasts like a few weeks to a month, um, but I think it, there's like a capstone event with the kids' activity at school, kind of like the, the jump rope day that they used to do. I'm not super familiar with this program, um, and we, we've never done it before, but, um, Ms. Beacon, our new elementary principal, had this on her, her list of things that she wanted to do this year, it just didn't make the, the list when we were reviewing things in the fall, and so, you know, she'd like to have your consideration to do it now, I think, you know, it's a, it's a good, good program, uh, I think it, uh, it's a good cause, so I, I would definitely support it, I just don't know a lot about it, because I've never done it before, but.
Any other questions?
I'll move to approve that kids' heart challenge.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Sets, seconded by Ms. Stangler, to approve as presented and or recommended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six oh vote. Brings us to discussion item F, school board election dates. Just a reminder, deadline for non-candidacy is December twenty-third. The office will be closed on the twenty-third, so you need to get that done by the twenty-second. The deadline for any new candidates to file is January third. The office closes at four fifteen, so you're asked to be arrive prior to four fifteen, there are two seats up for election. Any questions, discussion? None. Discussion, the operating referendum. Um, surveys, I believe, went out today. I've not had a chance to read yet, but if anybody else has?
Yeah, so we haven't seen any of the data yet, but I understand we, uh, just before I came to the meeting, we had thirty-three surveys returned already, um, they've gone out by email to parents and staff, um, they will be arriving. They will be arriving in mailboxes this week for multiple customers in the district areas. And then you can either fill out that paper survey or go online and take it.
Who's the survey being returned to? Like, where is it going?
It goes to School Perceptions and Slinger. So they're the ones that will manage all the data. And then they'll come and present to you guys in the January meeting about what all the data means.
So you guys are not receiving it, it's actually someone else?
Correct.
Please keep it down. So by all means, please implore our constituents to participate and give us all the data they can. Any other discussions regarding that? For the operating referendum? We will wait for the data to, it's true while we move forward. We will go to discussion item H, the administrative contracts. I guess it's more of a notice that in January, all administrative contracts will be reviewed. And we will need to take action at that time. Anything to add there, Brian?
Is anything, anyone ask for questions or anything anybody would like before the January meeting? Just reach out to me and let me know.
Okay, brings us into action item I. I will put a motion on the floor to go into closed session pursuant to the Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five, parent one and C. Board of Education, they moved into closed session for the purpose of, A, consider an employment promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise a responsibility. B, review of performance evaluation and contracts of specific individuals, certified staff, and administrative staff members. And C, uh, excuse me, there is no C. We will take a motion to return to open session when we're done. So I made that motion, is there a second? Okay. Let the time show seven twenty-four, and that is a roll call vote.
Craig, yes.
Quammy, yes.
Shire, yes.
Yes.
Quammy, yes.
Motion carries on a seven oh vote. We will take a, excuse me, six oh, thank you. We'll take a short recess here, let them tear the cameras down before we start the closed session. Thank you all.